Ask for. Mayor West. Mayor Rabel.
Here.
Mayor Tuck.
Present.
Supervisor Cardy.
Present.
Supervisor Hippel. Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
Mayor Alexander. Mayor Hassel. Mayor Glover.
Here.
Supervisor Cornwell.
Present.
Mayor Newman.
Here.
Councilman Oldham.
Here.
Mayor Fong.
Yes.
Supervisor Shepherd.
Here.
Senator Lucas. Senator Mason.
Here.
Delegate Jenkins.
Present.
Delegate Askew.
Present.
Delegate Holland. Board Member Stan.
Here.
Commissioner Rich.
Here.
Director Mitchell. Vice President Nelson. Mayor West.
Here.
Mayor Hippel.
Here.
Supervisor Hippel.
I think very good.
Mr. Mahaly, we have a forum?
We have a meeting forum and a voting forum. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Super, thank you. I'm sixty-seven years of age and also I have an allergy, so I thought I'd not notice it. That said, will I have a motion for approval agenda, please?
Motion for approval, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mayor with public comment period. Do you have anyone sign up?
Mr. Chairman, I'm unaware of anyone who has signed up, nor do we have any correspondence right before the board from the public to share with them today.
Thank you. And we'd like to welcome Delegate Askew and Mr. Stan, who's the new CTV representative. Welcome. Item number five is our consent items and like to ask for motion second on this. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, or Mayor with item number six, I'm going to call on Director Page to introduce the agenda items, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving forward with the action items, we have two action items and a discussion item today right before the board. First is item 2A, I could ask Mr. Michael Garber to come to the podium. While Mr. Garber is coming to the podium, I wanted to remind the commissioners that in accordance with the HR TAC enabling legislation, the Auditor of Public Accounts is vested with the conduction of the annual audit, which is an independent audit of HR TAC. PB Mars has been engaged by the Auditor of Public Accounts and continues to be. Congratulations PB Mars with your second agreement with them to continue to audit HR TAC. So I would like to turn the floor over to Mr. Garber to talk about the FY 2021 Audit of Financial Statements and also Compliance Report that's been provided to the Art of Public Accounts. Thank you.
Thank you for that introduction, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Good afternoon, and thank you for just giving me a few minutes here to go over the audit. You have a really thick packet of information there in front of you, and I know that a lot of that is taken up at this document. We did finish the audit back in September. Mr. Page was just referencing Auditor of Public Accounts has a deadline for us at the end of September, so we worked pretty diligently with the accounting staff at the BDC and HR TAC to get this completed and finished the issue on time, which I'm happy to say that we did get that done again this year. When looking at the financial statements themselves, you've got a unique entity. I know you know that. There aren't many like you in the state. You're one of the first that has been able to do what you do. Coming down yesterday, driving through sixty-four, and there were no signs to slow me up was very nice until I got to the tunnel work, and I'm okay with that, too. I pretty much see once this is done. And congratulations on Mary and the official unveiling. Even the other side of the mountain, we get to hear some of these things that go on, and I'm excited to participate and see how that project continues on. Moving to the financial statements, we have issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements themselves, and that's the type of opinion that you're looking for. It's a clean opinion, so we did not have any errors, omissions, or anything that materially would have changed those financial statements that we could find during our audit. Also, in the back of the financial statements is an opinion on internal control compliance. That report also has no issues or findings, so we had nothing that we looked at in internal control compliance that we thought we needed to bring to your attention. As far as the year itself is concerned, I'm not going to flip through the numbers. We're already halfway through the next fiscal year, and I know that you all look at these things monthly and track what's going on. We did issue quite a bit of debt last fiscal year, and right after the issuance of our report, you did it again in September. And so you guys are making great progress with the projects and in the direction that you're heading there. There was a second document that followed the financial statements that was also part of your bound document, and that just talks about the audit overall. If we had any audit entries, which we had none, if we had any difficulties gathering documents, getting answers to our questions, our inquiries, we would have laid those things out there in that letter. There's nothing to report there as well. So a very clean audit, very clean report for me today, as well as what we sent on to the Auditor of Public Accounts for them to include in the state's annual comprehensive financial report. So with that, I don't have much else prepared to go over, but I am happy to answer any questions you have, any observations or concerns that you may have.
Any questions or comments? Thank you. We need to ask for a motion and second on approving or adopting the audit report?
Motion for approval, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposing? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Garber, for coming over. Hopefully, we'll be over on the eighty-one quarter celebrating with you. We know how to cross that mountain, so certainly look forward to seeing some of that. Any advice, we're happy to come over and help with that. The commissioners got it under good hands, so I see you in the back there laughing. Before us now is Agenda Item 6B, which is an action item before the board. Commissioners could call their attention to the briefing on Item 6B. Just to recollect, we do have the master tolling agreement in place now, which affords the opportunity for the development of the Hampton Roads Express Lanes Network. And now that that's been executed with VDOT, we have completed and entered into the approved twenty-twenty-two, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-seven, six-year improvement plan for the entire eight-hundred-and-six-million-dollar project as anticipated. What we also have been doing with these projects is pulling the elements together, and as you all know, project readiness will come in with preliminary engineering right away, and then later construction addendums that will go to that and modifications that become part of the adopted six-year program is modified. So before you today, we have three agreements to develop, and these agreements are how we will work with VDOT and engage with them from a preliminary engineering and right-of-way for construction. For the project segments, segment one, which is the reversible lanes that will be modified that are currently in place today, four A, four B, which is up on the Jefferson down to La Salle piece, and then this is all on Interstate sixty-four, by the way, I'm going to reference that. And then four C, which is the section there basically La Salle down to Setters Landing. In these agreements, as you all know, staff always brings to the commission, and thanks to counsel working with me on this, and also Chris Hall, the commissioner, we try to make sure that we're moving forward to develop exactly what we know about projects with confidence before we take it any further into construction. Pretty similar to this, now we went with the two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars in some cost risk before we got the notice to proceed on the design builder for the construction of the HRBT project. So what we'll find today is that the agreements for segments four A, B, and four C will be conditioned for, to provide for the initial funding to VDOT to conduct provisional engineering to get to a level that VDOT can then go to FHWA with confidence to check and move forward with the conversion of one existing general purpose lane in the quarter from La Salle down to Setters Landing from a general purpose HOB and into hot use. Those actions haven't quite yet been taken, but we want to make sure that VDOT has the resources to develop project readiness before the commissioner, you will see it by next year, or who may be in that position, can move forward with Administrator Hall and team on that conversation with FHWA to ensure that we're all working within the applicable federal and state laws and the assumptions that were made in the development of that quarter. So once HR TAC and VDOT are satisfied with the necessary confirmations that have been obtained, preliminary engineering and right-of-way project scopes work will advance through this agreement to complete the task identified in the agreements. So those are the, is kind of a highlight there. I'd like, Mr. Chairman, if I could, to call in Administrator Paul, because I know you've made some great strides in progress on the provisional piece of this. It looks to me like, Mr. Hall, we will probably see something happening to move forward on that very quickly, whether in the first quarter or the next calendar year?
Yes, the delica for that four C project is complete and has been turned over to FHWA, so we expect realistically by the end of January, we should have dispensation on that topic.
Very good. So the action today, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, includes taking the elements of the eight-hundred-and-six-million dollars that's in the six-year program and placing them in segment one, UPC one-one-nine-six-three-seven, in the amount of nineteen million one-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand seven-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars. Segment four A, B, UPC one-one-nine-eight-two-four will be a spot for twelve million four-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand five-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars. Segment four C spot will be UPC one-one-nine-six-three-eight at the amount of fourteen million two-hundred-and-three-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. Just to remind commissioners that these allocations are being made as element allocations of what's already in the approved six-year program, and we have UPC's potential to those dollars. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn the floor over to you. Suggest a motion. If you need the council to read, be prepared to do so, and obviously you'll be first and second on that side.
May I ask for a motion to approve? Yeah, item sixty?
No move, second.
Any discussion?
Chair, do you want to read the motion, sir?
Yes, I'm sorry. I thought actually, right, a pay vote, but then I would ask our council member to read the motion, please.
Thanks, sir.
We'll back things up.
Certainly, Chair. The motion is that the commission, one, approves the standard projects, project agreements for funding and administration with respect to the Hampton Roads Express Lanes Network segments one, four A, four B, and four C preliminary engineering and right-of-way for construction work, and, two, authorizes the chair to execute and deliver such agreements with such changes, insertions, or omissions that may be finalized by the chair with the advice of the executive director and the commission's general counsel.
May I ask for a motion?
May I ask for a motion, second? No move, second.
Discussion?
Just a quick question. I may say, what is that total amount? How many millions do we spend?
It's eight-hundred-and-six-million dollars is the total value that the six-year program is adopted, and this is for forty-five and some changes that I've lost that number in front of me. I said.
That's okay. I just wanted to be able to go home and tell my wife to spend over eight-hundred million dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I may have a pleasure giving Mr. West another talking point. Right now, HR TAC is supporting the HRBT project at two-to-reover one-million dollars a day right now. That's stating what we're doing.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair, item number six, C?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'll ask Leon to come to the podium and give this presentation. Everyone here, I think, for the most part knows Ms. Chan, but works with PFM, who's a financial advisor, David Miller is also on the practice leagues that works with Leon. Before I turn the podium over to her, I would like to, first of all, recognize, you'll see in the presentation today, there was a very large magnitude, as Mr. Garber from PB Mars noted, that we have kind of a unique situation where we've made a lot of finance and also have a lot of projects that have made a very ambitious case. And I'd like to thank Ms. Chan and Mr. Miller, counselor in Glima, Eric Lele, who's our bond counsel, as well as Chuck Wall, who's been special counsel to support the commission, as well as David Miller from PFM. Also, on the VDOT team, I'd like to thank Chris Hall and your team, Jim Underback and his team, Timmy Gibson in particular, Laura Farmer. I know I'm throwing a lot of names out there, but these are people who've spent a lot of sleepless nights working with us through what was, in my opinion, a national pace setter as to how fast you can move infrastructure financing in seventy-two hours in the end. But there was a lot of preparatory work on that, a lot of negotiations back and forth. The foundation of all of this occurred right in the height of the pandemic, and I was very proud to say that I was part of a region that came together that during the height of the pandemic, we did not deter or slow any projects, nor the cash flow to those projects, which kept every single project fully marshaled and employed, and also providing improvements during a time when our nation and the world had taken pause. We continued to move forward. So I'd like to thank everyone that supported HR TAC on that. You, too, Mayor Tuck, for all your signatures that day, especially on the bond documents and the loan documents moving forward. So, Ms. Chan, thank you for all of your assistance, PFM, and I'll turn the floor over to you for your overview presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Good afternoon. It's a real pleasure to be here today. With the year-end approaching, we just wanted to use this time and report to the commission what we accomplished in twenty-twenty-two and what we plan to achieve in, I'm sorry, in twenty-twenty-one, what we plan to achieve in twenty-twenty-two. So with your guidance and Kevin leading the charge, we completed four debt transactions this year, totally two-point-five-billion dollars. And of these four transactions, one is refunding the twenty-nineteen loan related to the six initial projects. And the three other transactions are raising money for HRBT. Those four transactions were directly or indirectly tied to the actions and approvals of the Build America Bureau, the TPI program. So they were all synchronized and executed in December, sorry, in September this year. Before we take you through each deal, just wanted to spend one quick minute on the interest rate this year. So the actual rates that we got in September, the short-term tax exempt rate and the long-term treasury rate, which were the benchmark rates for our four transactions, are low in the historical context. They are ninety percent, ninety-five percent time lower in the past twenty years. And also, they are lower than the assumptions in our debt management plan that were presented to you in June. So we always want to be conservative and prudent with our debt management plan, and it's always a great result when actual rates are lower than the assumptions. So the primary focus in twenty-twenty-one was to complete the financing for HRBT with the TPI program. But during that process, we identified an opportunity to refund the twenty-nineteen loan with the TPI program without any extra cost to the commission. So we piggybacked on the TPI process for HRBT and lowered the interest rate on the twenty-nineteen loan from two-point-two-five percent to one-point-eight-six percent. So with that rate reduction, we were able to achieve thirty-seven million net present value savings. These two transactions are HRTF-backed new money for HRBT. So we sold eight-hundred-and-eighty million short-term notes, which will be taken out by the eight-hundred-and-eighty million, the second HRTF loan. This is the same two-prong financing strategy that we utilized back in twenty-nineteen. So the first lag, the short-term notes, interest rate is zero-point-five-six percent, which is much lower than the second lag, the long-term TPI loan, one-point-eight-four percent. So with this kind of two-pronged strategy and the investment earnings on the bands, we were able to generate thirty-three million interest borrowing savings. The last transaction is our very first toll revenue-backed financing, three-hundred-and-forty-five million toll revenue TPI loan. So we established a brand-new master trust indenture, which governs this first TPI loan, but also it allows for future borrowing backed by the toll loan. So this is what we expect to do with the HRLN coming up. For this TPI loan, the credit rating was triple-B minus, and because due to the nature of the TPI program, we were able to get the same one-point-eight-six percent interest rate that it was for a double A credit. So that brought, generated tremendous savings. If we were to go to the capital market and issue public bonds, then the additional borrowing costs would be a hundred-and-fifty-seven million dollars. So it's a, there were a lot of late-night hours and weekend hours, but the efforts, it was the efforts in the end. Looking ahead, twenty-twenty-two, the primary focus, one of the primary focuses is to find fundings for HRLN, the eight-hundred-million dollars that Kevin just mentioned. From this week to January, we will be receiving updated HRTF revenue projections from the tunnel out. We will be receiving the project's costs and procurement timing from VDOT, and we will be receiving the summer weekend traffic and revenue study that CDM Smith is currently working on. So with all those fresh data, we will refresh the financial plan for the entire HRLN, the eight-hundred-million scope. And based on the outcome of that updated plan, we can take a look at the timing and the preparation for the next HRTF bond sale, and then our second toll revenue-backed TPI loan, the timing for that. And also, we will continue to monitor the interest rate and continue to identify any other refunding opportunities for the commission. So for instance, the twenty-eight, the twenty-nineteen bands will mature soon in July, but because the six initial projects are delayed, the TPI loan can be drawn at a later time, which allows us to extend the twenty-nineteen maturity. So in that process, there may be some economic benefit to extend the maturity of the band. And also, over the past several weeks, refunding the twenty-eighteen bonds has appeared to be very attractive. So we will continue to monitor the market, get the bond documents ready, get the credit ratings ready, and come to you for approvals when, if the market, if the market continues to hold. That's all we have for you today. Have any questions?
Any questions, comments, observations? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Just one note, the committee was great to hear that presentation. When we approved the financing transactions in June, we asked our team to work diligently with the U.S. Department of Transportation to negotiate and close the two primary TPI loans. We also authorized them to proceed with bands itself and refinance the two-thousand-and-nineteen TPI loan. They did it in an outstanding manner and secured outstanding interest rates. The bands transaction and TPI refinancing produced an aggregate of seventy billion dollars in present value savings. And I was just thinking that it was, I guess, five years ago, this month, this meeting, that the vote was made to make the HRBT the priority as far as the transportation in this region. And the other day, we had a ceremony to, I guess, celebrate the arrival of Mary, the toll tunnel boring machine. And we talked about then that this was, we've actually invested some five-point-four-billion dollars in the various projects in our region, and that came from the cooperation, collaboration between VDOT and HRTPO, HR TAC, and actually these board members. And I remember, actually, I was elected in May two thousand sixteen and joined this body in that time, and really knew nothing, nothing about HRTPO and HR TAC. And Assistant City Manager Brian Corvus sitting behind Senator Mason, and he would actually, before these meetings, would come to my office and brief me of what I'd been prepared for, as well as prepare a binder. And so the other day, at that ceremony, I pointed out that, yes, I may be the face of HR TAC because I'm the chair, but I fully recognize the high stand on the shoulders of Supervisor Shepherd, who was the chair in HRTPO at that time, as well as Supervisor Hippel, who was the chair of HR TAC, and also remember some discussions among some of the general assembly members who said that, you know, they probably would have gone to the graves before they ever wanted to raise a tax, but they recognized the importance of what they did with that legislation in two thousand thirteen as far as moving this region forward. And we hear about it all the time from people associated with the port. We hear from the meetings we've had with our different military commanders, and we also recognize fully what the impact it will have on commerce in our region, just the fact that people can, with some certainty, know that they can go from Minnesota to the south side and from the south side to Minnesota. And in all of this, the person really is the, as they call it, treasurer, but he is a special, special individual, and we are truly blessed to have Executive Director Kevin Page, who's been just brilliant in trying to keep us moving forward. His perceptions, his knowledge, his connections, his guidance, his very aspect of what he has done in moving us forward has just been phenomenal, and he's too humble to take the credit for himself, but I believe that he deserves a round of applause for all he's done to get us to this path. Now, as if this meeting is moving too fast, I'm going to slow it down one more time and ask for Commissioner Rich, if he'd like to make some comments.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, I'd say that we've accomplished a lot over the last four years, let alone during the last, probably, twenty months when COVID struck. Part of what we've been able to do, and you heard this earlier, that the department has leaned forward all throughout the thirty-seven-hundred projects that make up our six-year plan and have not delayed a project, have kept it on schedule, on budget, and continue to deliver it, but having also said that we found ways to work around the virus in a safe manner. Most importantly, while we kept products on time and on budget, we kept all of our employees, all of our contractors, and all of our consultants on the job, employed without losing one individual. So that's a testament. But having said that, Mr. Chairman, yes, we participated in a number of activities since, for the last two years that COVID struck, one of which was the milestone of the groundbreaking on the HRBT. Tuesday this week, we implemented or we welcomed Mary's arrival. I did bring a little bit of a present that's a Rubik's Cube to be able to show you how Mary is going to work underground with that. We talked a little bit about that there. But, and coming up on Monday, we'll And coming up on Monday, we'll again be together, be able to celebrate the opening of 64, Segment 3, and there might be some news a little bit later about the remaining 29 miles of the 60-point gap that we might be in a position to share either today or later, hopefully before Christmas, that there might be some news on that, too. So we continue to lean forward, and I'd say part of what we're coming up on next in the agenda topic on the financial reports, the Governor did announce today the upcoming budget, the biennial budget, and I would say that the recipient of transportation has a very large net increase to those numbers. I did not come prepared to talk about what was contained in the budget, because I, I'll just be very upfront, I haven't seen the numbers in the budget, so those were being refined, including up until this morning. So when we get line of sight, we'll be reporting back to the Executive Director, but I can tell you that it is an uplift back, a sizable uplift back into the transportation numbers. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. And the reason I asked Commissioner Rich to release the time option to speak was on Tuesday, he and I were having a discussion, and he's actually a political appointee, and we're not sure what will happen after, I guess, the new February 1st morning, but he has served us tremendously well, and he's served the Commonwealth very, very well, and I just want to thank you for just all the wonderful things you've done, particularly in leading our projects here. Major Gang. Thank you. Commissioner Rich Page, rest in peace.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for those great comments and support of the Commission, and applause. It's been a real blessing to have and be witness to a part of the regional collaborative that HR-TAC has become, and it just, to me, it's been a blessing to be a part of it, certainly a pinnacle in my career, a very high point. Thank you. I was going into Agenda Section 7, Item 7A, for you is the monthly financial report for HR-TAC. Just to give an update on the cash position as of this morning, our balance as of November 30th, total all banks for the HRTF was $2,333,634,563 cash. The Hampton Roads Regional Transit Fund, total all banks, $54,303,956 cash. Total all banks, HR-TAC, putting investments, this is the non-arbitrage SNAP program, HRTF all-in is $2,387,938,519. So I'm here to report that HR-TAC is very solvent. We have just, as you, thank you for the confirmation and consent agenda. Mr. Nelson Bush, are you here today? I think Nelson came up. Nelson came up from Texas today and just answered any questions anyone may have on our investment portfolio and the ladder investment strategy we have. Also, Mr. Bush is employed by the Treasurer of the G to also be the advisor on the state non-arbitrage program. So we have a very deep bench, Mr. Chairman, as you know, and the capabilities that we have here at TAC. We run as lean as possible, but also we'll bring in those capabilities when necessary. So the financial report is before you, case there are any questions, Mr. Chair. And also, I'll call it to your attention of the VDOT project updates, Attachment 7B. I'll ask Mr. Hall if he has any highlights he'd like to bring to the table, and Mr. Utterback has also provided his report, which is the last item in your agenda package. Mr. Hall?
Thank you. Just, I'll just take you back on the comments of the Commissioner on the Segment 3 dedication ribbon-cutting ceremony on Monday. That will cap off what has been about six years' worth of work on the Peninsula to get us roughly 21 miles of interstate widened and improved, adding about 41 lane miles of additional capacity, rehabbing and widening 17 bridges, rehabilitating and other four structures, and employing roughly about 400 people daily on average with all those projects moving forward over the last five and a half years. So just a great milestone for us, and I know everybody up on the Peninsula or travels that portion of the interstate, you know, tremendous positive impact to that area and to the region. The only other update I would have is, as you can notice, if you travel, the 264 had a change. We're working diversely to get the rest of that project open, and we should have all those features of that project open to the public. We're looking right now about mid-January. We did have some slipage to the right on the schedule, but with fair weather, we think we can have all of those features operating on that project by the middle of January. So appreciate everybody's patience, and that concludes my update. Unless there are any questions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hall. Mr. Chairman, turn it forward. Do you have any questions, Mr. Hall?
Any questions or comments, Mr. Hall?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, the last informational item for you today of the visits to bring before the Commission is the announcement of the HR-TAC regular meeting on April 21st, 2022, 12:30 PM, right here in the turntable.
Thank you. We will ask if you're doing business. Here you know it, we are journeying. Have a happy holiday.